Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order for September 5th. The B O C C, it is a special meeting and I hope that everybody fared well through the storm and thank you for being here. Howard, if you will start with the invocation, I would be happy to have that.
Thank you, and I invite you to join with me if you're willing. Gracious Father, you have no doubt heard from many people over the past week looking for mercy for the east coast of Florida and on St. Lucie County. And so we start this meeting with sharing that there are 320,000 grateful hearts here for Hurricane Dorian turning away from our coastline. We are fully aware of what might have been and for being spared that devastation, we are eternally grateful. At the same time, we share the grief of our Bahamian neighbors to the east who have lost so much from this same hurricane. As we have been blessed, may we find the opportunity to come together as a community to be a blessing to those in need. And for all the grateful hearts here this evening, we say amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, we're going to Agenda Item 4A. The purpose of the public hearing is to adopt the tentative millage rates and the budget for fiscal year 2019 to 2020. Please note to all the members of the public, we have staff available this evening to review and discuss your personal notice of property, proposed property taxes recently received from the property appraiser. Staff members of the property appraisers office and O M B are located at the entrance of the chambers to my left. Howard?
Thank you. Madam Chair, Board of County Commissioners, at this meeting, we will be setting the tentative millage rates. The Board will have another opportunity to consider these millage rates at the final budget hearing in two weeks. However, these rates cannot be raised without sending out new notices to every property owner. I would ask that our Office of Management and Budget read into the record the tentative millage rates for the fiscal year 2019-2020, which are used to fund the portion of the fiscal year 2019-20 budget that is supported by property taxes.
Madam Chair, Board of County Commissioners, I would like to take a moment to review some terms for the public that will be frequently used tonight. First term, the millage rate is the amount per $1,000 of property value that is used to calculate property taxes. The rollback rate is the millage rate that would generate the same ad valorem tax revenue as was generated the previous year excluding changes from new construction, annexation, or de-annexation. The aggregate millage rate is the rate obtained by dividing the sum of all the ad valorem taxes levied by the Board by the taxable value of the county. The aggregate rate expresses the average tax rate. The tentative aggregate millage rate for the fiscal year 2019-2020 budget is 8.8759, which is a 0.28% decrease from the current fiscal year 2018-2019 aggregate millage rate, or a 5.03% increase from the fiscal year 2019-2020 aggregate rollback rate of 8.4509. The individual fiscal year 2019-2020 tentative millage rates are as follows. General Fund, 4.3077 mils. Fine and forfeiture, 3.2324 mils. Erosion Control, Zone E, 0.1497 mils. Mosquito Control District, 0.1806 mils. Unincorporated Services MSTU, 0.3840 mils. Stormwater MSTU, 0.3497 mils. Law Enforcement MSTU, 0.9103 mils. Parks MSTU, 0.2313 mils. Transit MSTU, 0.1269 mils.
Madam Chair, at this time, we're at Agenda Item 4B, and this will be staff's budget presentation for this evening. Ms. Jennifer Hill, our Director of the Office of Management and Budget, will be making that presentation.
Thank you. The fiscal year 2019-2020 budget that is being presented to you tonight is $587,862,431, which represents an increase of approximately $42 million from the fiscal year 19 adopted budget and is $98 million lower than in fiscal year 2008, while at the same time, the population has grown by approximately 64,000 people. The overall budget increases and decreases over the years for many reasons. This year, the increases are related to the new infrastructure sales tax, incremental revenues associated with property value growth, and grant revenues. The overall Board of County Commissioners workforce is budgeted at 800, or just slightly over 800, full-time equivalent positions, or FTEs, which is a 13.7 FTE increase from the adopted fiscal year 19 budget. The county is operating with 182 less positions than in 2007, and for fiscal year 2020, we will be operating with a workforce that is the size that it was in 2003. Over that 17-year period, our population is projected to have grown by approximately 56% or 120,000 residents, and we continue to see an increase of approximately 6,000 people come to our community each year. This budget reflects changes to millage rates for the General Fund, Fine and Forfeiture Fund, Erosion Control, and Mosquito District. Some of the rates are increasing and others are decreasing to offset the increases so that ultimately, there is a slight reduction in the aggregate millage rates. This gives us an aggregate millage rate of 8.8759 mils. And while fiscal year 2020 will be the seventh year that we have seen growth in the taxable value, property values are still 14% lower than they were in 2008 when property values peaked at $25.6 billion, and St. Lucie County is still $3.5 billion below the property values that we had back in 2008. The Board reviewed and discussed the budget extensively through a series of workshops in July and a regular board meeting in July. At tonight's meeting, we will be asking the Board to adopt the tentative millage rates and budget, and in two weeks, the Board is scheduled to adopt the final millage rates and budget. The budget year will then begin October 1st. We make changes to the budget throughout the budget process as the original budget requests that were submitted by the departments were submitted roughly six months ago, and we now have more information to accurately reflect the budget. The budget that is being proposed tonight reflects an increase of $5.5 million over the budget that was presented when the Board approved the millage rates for the property tax notices, bringing the total budget to $587.9 million. These changes are primarily due to increases in grant funds and capital projects being Property taxes in the state of Florida are very complex. We have a system where two identical houses right next door to each other can have vastly different assessed values and therefore pay vastly different taxes. While there are complexities in the assessment of value, the formula for the property tax levy is simple. The property tax levied equals the millage rate times the assessed property value divided by 1,000. The taxes collected are influenced by two factors, the millage rate and the assessed value. The aggregate rate expresses the average tax rate. And when we're looking at tax rates, the cost to provide services is the focus of the budget, and that drives what the tax rates are calculated out to be. In fiscal year 2007, the average taxes collected to fund just our General Fund and Fine and Forfeiture Fund was $611 per capita or per person. If you adjust the rate for inflation, we would be collecting $788 per person, which is reflected in the line on the graph. However, the rate we are currently levying equates to $493 per person, which is reflected by the bars on the graph. We are charging 37% less, or $295 less per person than the fiscal year 2007 rate in As I mentioned, there are two factors that come into play when calculating property taxes. The first factor in the taxes levied is the millage rate. For fiscal year 2019, the average millage rate levied by all of the taxing districts in St. Lucie County was 22.8369 mils. Of that, 8.9 mils was levied by the St. Lucie County Board of County Commissioners, which includes funding for the constitutional officers, dependent districts, and municipal service taxing units. The second factor in the taxes levied is the property value. This year, the per capita property value ranged from $14,681 to $359,124 throughout the 67 counties in the state of Florida. The statewide average was $89,392 per capita, and St. Lucie County's value was $67,599 per capita, which is 24% lower than the average. When you take the property values and the millage rates together, you get the taxes collected. This graph shows the taxes per capita levied by all taxing authorities within each county. The taxes collected ranged from $273 to $3,338 per capita. The statewide average was $1,597, and St. Lucie County at $1,604. I'd like to repeat that. The state average was $1,597, and St. Lucie County was $1,604. So, St. Lucie County's millage rate is higher than the statewide average, however, St. Lucie County's taxable value is lower than the statewide average, and when you bring these two factors together, the result is county taxes per capita being near the statewide And since the Board of County Commissioners doesn't have control over all of the taxes on the St. Lucie County tax bill, we also analyze the taxes collected by the individual county Board of County Commissioners throughout the state of Florida. And when we looked at that, the per capita taxes for each of the county Board of County Commissioners ranged from $147 to $1,257 per capita. The statewide average was $615, and the St. Lucie County Board of County Commissioners was slightly below average at $602. And I'd like to say that again, too. This year, the per capita taxes levied by St. Lucie County Board of County Commissioners was $602, which is slightly below the statewide average of $615. And again, the reason for that is that St. Lucie County's Board of County Commissioner's millage rate is higher than the statewide average, however, the St. Lucie County's taxable value being slower than the statewide average, and when you bring these two factors together, the result is county taxes per capita being very near and slightly below the statewide average. And since the beginning of this fiscal year, St. Lucie County voters have been asked whether they would be willing to pay more taxes to pay for the needs of our community on two separate occasions. On both referendums, the answer was yes. Both the infrastructure sales tax and the school board millage increase represent local issues where there was a demonstrated need, and a majority of the St. Lucie County voters were willing to pay for that need. We are very thankful to the voters for helping to give us resources to help address the needs of the community. Neither of these referendums were done to try to keep the budget at a net zero increase. They were done to make improvements and provide increased resources so that we could keep up with the demands of our residents. We are very thankful for the infrastructure sales tax because it helps us to give us the ability to help address our infrastructure needs. However, it doesn't fully address our needs, and we are also utilizing our General Fund to cover transportation infrastructure needs. Over the last year, we have utilized $3.5 million from our General Fund transportation reserves, and the tentative budget does not replenish these reserves. And while these reserves are not as critical as they were before the passage of the infrastructure sales tax, this is still the go-to funding source when a culvert breaks. And speaking of reserves, since 2010, the county has relied on reserves to fill the gap between revenues and expenses. At the end of fiscal year 2018, the fund balance in the General Fund and Fine and Forfeiture Fund was less than half the amount that we had in 2010. Over that timeframe, the fund balance decreased from $112 million to $51 million, and we expect that the fund balance will drop further this year as we utilize $1.8 million to fund the current year's operating budget and cover expenses related to inmate medical. In this fund balance, we include our county's emergency reserve policy. Our policy has been to budget $36.5 million, which includes three components, $16.5 million for emergency reserves, $14 million for budget stabilization, and $6 million for transportation infrastructure reserves. However, that last component, that $6 million, is what I referred to on the last slide. That $6 million has been spent down to approximately $2.5 million, and at this point, we have not, we have not been able to replenish that at this point. And so, in fiscal year 2015, we developed a five-year plan to stabilize the budget so that our recurring expenses did not exceed our recurring revenue. As we go into the fifth year of that plan, with the utilization of $1.8 million in revenue generated from this year's property tax growth, the tentative budget has us attaining our goal. The Board has demonstrated great fiscal discipline and a commitment to fiscal stewardship in setting responsible reserves and sticking to a five-year budget stabilization plan. Executing this plan took planning, dedication, and commitment. It has not only provided financial stability through the economic downturn and the recovery, but it has also been recognized by the financial institutions with a double A rating. As we are finishing our commitment to the five-year plan that stabilized the budget, we begin to consider what the next five years will look like. That will be developed over the coming months, taking into account that the Board has expressed a desire to see millage rate reductions and a review of the county's reserve policies.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I will take this next section, and this is the challenges that we tried to address in the proposed budget before you. Now, there are always new and increasingly complex challenges that are added to the existing challenges we face and that we still need to address. St. Lucie County has a strong track record of addressing challenges through sound strategies and execution. What's ahead will require no less. July's budget workshops highlighted five budget challenges for discussion, but this list is certainly not exhaustive of the opportunities in front of us, and we will use, interchange the word "challenge" and "opportunity" frequently. Beach renourishment. So, in this budget, we've identified three tiers of funding needs for the Erosion Control District. The tentative budget makes gains on the first two tiers, which is the erosion district's reserves and Fort Pierce Beach, but does not provide any funding for the third and most expensive tier, and that's the South County Beach Project. The proposed budget includes a rebalancing between the erosion and mosquito millages of approximately $750,000 and a general fine and forfeiture rebalancing of approximately $450,000. So, we're able to move dollars within the existing millage rates based on need, and so that's what we were able to do. It's important to remember, a couple of years ago, when mosquito control was hit by Hurricane Irma, we ended up spending $4 million out of those reserves. Those have now been replenished, both with growth in the mosquito control fund as well as reimbursement from FEMA, and so we're able to do and make this move without impacting mosquito control operations. I would also tell you that with the Hurricane Dorian, which we just had the pleasure of experiencing, we know that we've lost millions of dollars of sand from our beaches. We don't have the exact number yet, but we know that certainly, the Fort Pierce Beach was impacted beyond what we were anticipating, the need for the truck haul this fall that had been budgeted. And so, again, we talk about the need for reserves, and we're going to talk about that a little bit more as we develop this five-year plan, but the reserves for erosion in particular are especially important as we face what seems to be increasing storm activity. Building maintenance. There are several areas where the needs related to our facilities outstep the resources available. The tentative budget provides for three additional positions in critical areas of maintenance, so we increase maintenance efforts and some additional funding for maintenance needs while we look at ways to shed facilities through a more efficient use of our space. Everything we have is getting older, and as it gets older, it requires more, more maintenance. This is an area that we're not only facing, but everybody is facing. So many of our facilities are 30, 40, 50 years old, and the, and the needs only grow with the years. Compensation for employees. Two years ago, the county hired an outside consultant to review selected positions and found on average that we were 25% below the market rates. That year, the county made an investment in its employees and helped to close that gap. However, we remain about 18% behind the market today. This budget includes a $50,000 salary study, and the results of that study will be presented to you over this next year as we look to see how we can implement that. Transit. Over the past year, transit has taken a more prominent role as we work to expand our system to meet the growing needs of our economy, and that includes getting our citizens to training and educational facilities. We are future-focused on what's next, and that's important for our growing community and ensuring that our municipal partners feel that their citizens are getting good value and service. The proposed budget funds the continuation of existing service levels and begins to expand service in critical areas. We had a conversation this morning with a number of our partners, the EDC and Career Source, talking about the needs as we expand our manufacturing facilities, that they are not working eight to five. They have multiple shifts, they start early, and the need to get our citizens to those jobs is paramount. And so, again, it's, it's, it's a good news story. We are creating, in just the St. Lucie Boulevard quarter, we're looking at an additional 300 jobs in the next 18 to 24 months. Virtually all of them shift work, and so we have the opportunity now to figure out how we get them there, and it's a good problem to have, but transit's going to be important as we go forward. And lastly, we've talked in our, in our budget workshops about the jail population. How a high jail population creates a higher financial risk environment for the county commission. There is the increased risk for higher inmate medical costs for the wear and tear on the facilities, and the probability of having to build additional jail beds, higher correctional staffing, and operating costs. The proposed budget includes increased funding for inmate medical services. This is part of a bigger conversation on how to control costs and learn from the best practices implemented by other agencies. Those are just some of the challenges that we begin to address in this budget.
When we look at the average tax bill in St. Lucie County, approximately 39% of that tax bill is levied by the St. Lucie County Board of County Commissioners, with the other 61% being levied by the school board, the municipalities, and the special And so, for the St. Lucie County Board of County Commissioners, we look at what the impact of taxes are on the residents of our community. We look at it two ways. One, from a property that's homesteaded, and one for properties that are non-homesteaded. And for fiscal year 2020, as we mentioned, the millage rates, some have gone up, some have gone down, but overall, anytime we've decreased, increased one millage rate, we've decreased another. So, the increases that, that people see in their tax bills are largely coming from the changes in the values. And so, for a homesteaded property, that is limited to either 3% or CPI, whichever's lower, and for this year, that CPI is 1.9%. And so, this slide represents the impact of a homesteaded property located within, within one of the cities, so it shows all of the, all of the taxes that everybody pays, but doesn't include the, anything that is a municipal service taxing unit only levied in the unincorporated area. And we focus on a property that's $230,000 as that And we focus on a property that's $230,000, as that's the median value of a home in St. Lucie County. And due to the increases in values, this property, shown on this slide, would increase by $35.96 per year, which equates to $3 a month on the taxes levied by the St. Lucie County Board of County Commissioners. It's important to note this year, with the passage of the one mil for the schools, that over and above what the taxpayer will see from the county, they'll also see the impact of that one mil increase. And so, for this sample property, that would equate to approximately $17.42 per month in school taxes. And so, taking that same analysis for a non-homesteaded property, we look at the average increase in the property values at 8.3%, and we look at that $230,000 property, but this time no longer limited by that 1.9% cap for Save Our Homes, and we see a property going up by 8.3%. And so, a $230,000 property, in this case, would go up $157.08 per year, which equates to a little more than $13 per month. And that property would also see the change due to the school board's millage of approximately $20.75 per month. So, those are just some samples to try and illustrate what is happening on individuals' tax bills. That being said, that concludes my presentation at this point. Let's turn it back over for public comment.
This is Agenda Item 4C in the meeting this evening. Madam Chair and Commissioners, this item allows for public comment on the tentative county budget for fiscal year 2019, 2020. Madam Chair, we are now ready to accept public comments on the tentative budget for this coming fiscal year.
Thank you, Mr. Tipton. This is a time, if there is anyone present that wants to address the Board at this point, please come forward.
My name is Angel Martinez. I live at 121 Southwest Landis Lane in Port San Lucie. And I am a new resident of Port San Lucie, and I'm honestly appalled at the tax that exists in San Lucie County. I have done some research on the Internet and then found that the property taxes in San Lucie County are approximately 13% higher than the median taxes in the rest of the state. In addition, also 12% higher than the median in the U.S. I understand also that the tax values have increased about 8.6% in San Lucie County. I presume they have done an appraisal, appraised value of the properties, and this is what they have come up with. I don't know how factual that is, anyway. I also understand that San Lucie County has increased the taxes by 6% despite of lowering the tax rate. I don't quite understand. I don't know if they're trying to balance the value of the property, trying to come up with some reasonable tax. I'm not understanding the whole process. When it comes to myself personally, I moved from Palm Beach County about a year ago. I purchased a property in San Lucie County, in the city of Port San Lucie, and my property taxes have increased 63% over what I was paying in Palm Beach County. If the new taxes go on, I'll be paying 70% higher. I'm going to fix income like a lot of citizens in this state, especially in this area that I've seen. Like I said, I'm new in the area, three or four years. I am amazed that the amount of money that you have to pay in taxes and sales taxes, and the sales tax recently went up, I think, a penny. For myself, I'm a professional, I'm a retired structural engineer. I pay, of my retirement, of my Social Security, approximately 20% of that goes into real estate taxes and sales tax. I think it's quite a lot of money for a retired person to go through. And I can see there's not a lot of people here, there's a lot of retired people here that I've spoken to, and they don't show up to this meeting. And I don't understand why. We had a promise trying to come to the building. I was getting ready to leave because the doors were locked on this side. So, I don't know, the other people do the same thing. I wasn't aware that the front door is the way to come in. But anyway, that's all my concerns. As a retired person, I'm very concerned about the cost of increased taxes in Port San Lucie County. Thank you very much. Thank you for entertaining me. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Madam Chair, I'd recommend that the gentleman speak with the property appraisers' folks outside whenever he has some questions, because there's transferability for taxes from county to county. When you leave a home to another home, you may not have done that. There's maybe questions that you should ask or could ask, and they could share with you to work through that. It's unlikely that the taxes in St. Lucie County for a house of the same would be higher, but our professionals will be outside to help you with those questions. Got it? Thank you. Homestead is the issue.
Also, Madam Chair, I just want to also, for the record, clarify, he had said that there's been a recent 1 cent increase in sales tax, it was a half a cent. Thank you.
So, my name is Doug Wright. I live in St. Lucie Village. So, I just have one question. Where can we go to look at? I see the budget items, but I'm interested to know what initiatives have been undertaken to ensure those dollars are spent efficiently? So, I know the tendency with budget is just to look at last year, try to contain that, but that doesn't mean the dollars are spent well. So, where can we find that information? Budget item by budget?
Madam Chair, I'd recommend coming to the Citizens' Budget Committee meetings. They're held each month, and the citizens sit at the table, and they go through budget item by item by item. And we also have our budget available. That is actually a well document that you could pick up. We have them available. The clerk of the court would have them. And also, thank you very much, and they are online.
When are the budget meetings?
Pardon me?
When are the budget meetings?
When is the Citizens' Budget Committee meeting?
Is it the first?
It's usually the third Friday, but it varies some. If you could get with me after the meeting, you give me your email address, I will get you a schedule of those meetings. But they're typically the third Friday of the month at 7:30 in the morning in this building. There are some months that get moved around for different reasons. But also adding on to that, there's, on the county's website, we do have the county's budget book, which, there is a section for each department's budget, and in there, there's information on the initiatives for each department. Some of the individual departments will specifically address some of the questions that you're asking about, about how they're taking measures to efficiently spend the resources, but also, under the Management and Budget Department specifically, we have some initiatives where we do lean six sigma training, where we've tried to take additional steps to improve our processes, to help us to better utilize the county's resources. But the information on those initiatives is in the budget book, which is available on the county's website.
I think I saw that the total budget was 500...
Eighty-seven million.
Eighty-seven million. So, of that 587, what percent or what dollar value was reduced as a result of the citizen committee? I guess what I'm trying to get at is, is that just performa, or does something really come of it?
Madam Chair, Mr. Wright, these are really great questions, and I would invite you to make an appointment with my office, and we can sit down and go through those a little bit more, where you have more time to actually go through that with our staff. And I would be happy to give you my card to make an appointment, and we can sit down with budget, because these are great questions, and I'm going to give you the time to have those questions asked and answered with the available time that we have tonight. So, if you wouldn't mind, my executive aide is here. He can get your number, and we can make an appointment, and...
I'll do that. Would you agree that we can talk about that publicly at the next meeting, whatever comes of that?
Sure.
All right. Super.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm a resident of county, unincorporated area, in New River Estates. I have just a question about the sales tax and the millage rate. Are those open-ended for a specific person or purpose, or are they forever?
I can try to answer that. The sales tax that was just passed this past November is for a 10-year period of time.
10 years.
10 years, and it is specific for infrastructure. So, we talked about roads and sidewalks and drainage improvement. So, those dollars can only be spent on those subjects and only on projects that have already been approved by the Board of County Commissioners.
Okay, so it's like an infrastructure-type...
That's exactly what it is.
Sales tax.
That's exactly right, sir.
Okay, and the millage rate, is that...
The millage rates are, so, within the budget, we have an erosion control district, and it has its own millage rate. And so, that millage rate can only be spent on beach-related issues. Erosion control is what that stands for. Mosquito control can only be spent on mosquito control areas. Fine and forfeiture dollars, which are dollars that are property tax dollars that are used for public safety, so they are used for the jail, for the sheriff, for the emergency operations center, those kinds of things. And then, the general government property tax, or what we call the general fund millage rate, is used for the general-purpose rates. And so, that kind of provides for all of your general government operations. So, there are different millage rates. There is a parks millage rate, there are some different things, but they are very specialized. The general fund is the millage rate that allows for kind of most of the general fund or general government operations.
As an aside, I was wondering, how does the state-mandated school security work on the county budget with, say, the sheriff's department or even Fort Pierce Police or whoever, in the school resource offices or other police departments?
So, since about 2010, the Board of County Commissioners has picked up a lot of the school resource security costs. So, we were excited to see the school board go out for a referendum that would actually help them begin to pay for more of the costs of the school resource officers, as well as hardening of the facilities as well. They don't pick up all of the costs, the county still picks up some of that, but it is much more balanced than it has been.
So, the school board works hand-in-hand with the sheriff's department, I guess?
Absolutely, actually, they do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, also, sir, it's all, Mr. Tipton, it's also true that on the additional half a cent sales tax, it is only for the first $5,000. Anything over the $5,000 at half a cent does not apply to it, because like a car, vehicle, or boat or something.
That's right. Thank you, Commissioner. Yes, that's exactly right. There is a limit to the amount. It's $25 would be the amount. If you were to buy a car, that additional half cent costs you an additional $25.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the commission at this time? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Thank you all for your comments. I know that there are options for you so that you can make appointments, and we're happy to talk to anyone about these. Howard, we go to 4D.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Agenda Item 4D. It is recommended that the Board of County Commissioners discuss the tentative fiscal year 2019, 2020 millage rates and budget. Any changes to the millage rates under this item will be recomputed, announced, and adopted under Item 4E. And so, this is the Board's chance to have conversation about what has just been presented.
Madam Chair, is it correct that if we pass this tentative, that means that the millage cannot be increased, but it could be decreased? Am I correct?
That's right. Yes.
Madam Chair, I just want to remind my colleagues, and I know you've been through as many presentations as I, but due to the changes from the state, the unfunded mandates that are passed down to us on a frequent basis, they brought up the school resource officers last year, I think it was in the millions of dollars that it took from our general fund, which was not budgeted. So, we had to scramble to find those millions of dollars last year. The other is the wide brush in which the state chooses to send homestead exemptions down to us, oftentimes without, you know, consideration. We, as a county, are different than Tampa, or Orlando, or Miami, or Naples. And so, the wide, broad brush that oftentimes the state sends to us with homestead exemptions affects us much greater than those who have in the multi-billion's of dollars of budget. The other is, having been here through the first budget after the recession, or I'll call it a depression, we actually cut over 350 personnel from our budget in that very first budget. As part of that, the state also passed down an automatic 10% decrease in the valuations, which we'll never see back. The 3% cap is what I think some of the folks might want to look into, that if they transfer in the property appraisers here to talk to those folks, but when you transfer, transferability has been made available in the state, which is a good thing for the individuals who own properties. The homestead exemptions are another thing that gets, if you're in a home for a long period of time and the cap is in place, you have an opportunity to see a much lower tax than those who buy today or travel from somewhere else, from, say, another state. So, those are considerations, and that's why we have in your presentation, Ms. Hill, that two houses side by side could have vastly different experiences in taxation. So, that's why we, the property appraisers, are so generous to have folks here for us to walk through individual scenarios. And that's where you'll find the most opportunity for your information to deal with what you have in general. What's also important, from my perspective, is, just like you do at home with your budget, your home budget, whether it's budgeting for a car, budgeting for food, electric, et cetera, we've taken a five-year approach to our budget, and as part of that, we are in the fifth year of those five years. And to change course today would upset that success that we're seeing, and we see that success in the fifth year. If nothing changes at the state level with another homestead or some other unfunded mandate that affects us greatly, we will be able to be at equilibrium. When I say equilibrium, it's the value of the revenue coming in for the services that are expected. What is not expected is the amount of growth. That is a challenge for us on every occasion, whether it's roads, or we've seen the hurricane costs go up exponentially. Those are hidden costs that we don't see until the hurricanes come and go. Last year alone, the Edwards Road failure of the drainage system there is an $8 million fix. So, those are the types of things we... We continue to try and have our reserves in our so-called piggy bank, our savings, that help us stem those tides. So, as we've seen, we were very lucky today, or this week, to miss the devastation that of Dorian, but our reserves would have been chewed up in a nanosecond if that had hit us. So, this board and previous boards have been very fiscally responsible to set budgets, stay in those budgets, and task our staff to find cost savings and to not, as most might think in general business, if you have a budget, let's roll it over and let's keep going with that budget. That's not what we task our staffs to do. We task them to stay within the budget and find reductions so that we can continue to find savings. And that's what this board and previous boards have done for the last, well, since the recession started. And so, I'm confident that we will come through this and be prepared... So that said, I, I just, you know, I just want to reassure my, my colleagues that we have been doing the right thing financially, and our staffs have been doing the right things to find the, the economics of scale in some cases and the savings. So that's what I have to share. I just have been through the, the, the most tumultuous of budgets since 2008, and we are just finally getting to equilibrium. And I'm proud of our staffs for having done that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, I'll go next. So I, I do agree with a lot of the things that you have said, Commissioners Zdowski, but for me, I look at it in a different perspective. So the, the way I look at it is that it, it was a five-year plan, and we're in year five. But when the plan was made five years ago, it was based on the revenue that we had coming in at that time. We have been gifted that over the last four years, now year five, we have had increased property values. So therefore, the revenue coming into that plan is greater. We've also had more homes built and more people moving into the county. So what the plan was based on, the numbers have increased coming in, so we have exceeded beyond what that five-year plan was. With that, we have had, you know, hurricane over the last five years. We've had erosion. We've had beach sand losses and stuff. And as you stated, you know, I, I understand that we all have a budget. And for me, from the business perspective of it and my background, I believe that government needs to be held accountable to live within a budget that we have. And so as, as a homeowner, as an individual that owns a home, we're always going to have a new roof. We're always going to have a hot water heater that needs to be repaired. But at the end of the day, we find a way to come up with it. We take one less vacation, or we don't go out to dinner as much as we did. So as government, we need to be mindful and look at ways that we can cut things and cut our budget and go back. And so for me, I look at the big picture. We are the county. We're the parents. We're the adults. We have every single home taxed, and we get that revenue into our bank account. The cities have just what's in the municipality. So with the three municipalities that's here, they have found a way to lower the millage rate, yet we are not doing that. We're holding it the same. So again, you know, I, I have requested this at the informal meeting. I said it at the last time that we were discussing this. And again, I'm going to ask this board to at least do what the city of Port St. Lucie has done over the last four years, which is a .10 of a mil. This year, they are doing a .226. They have less homes, and they have found a way to give back. Our residents have believed in us. We have built a trust in them. We have come together with our cities. They gave us a gift of funding the infrastructure needs that we have and the half a cent sales tax. They, they did their homework, and they did their, they, they looked at the homestead that was on the referendum, and they filled it because they knew that it was going to cost. And yes, we have had unfunded, unfunded mandates. But at the end of the day, the school board partnering with the sheriff's department, they came to the table and picked up the slack to carry the school resource officers that we've been carrying for years. And so I think the balance is there, and I think in this being the fifth year of our plan, the funds are there, property values are up 8%. We're coming into this more than we thought we were going to have. Originally, when we did the budget, we were basing it, Mr. Tipton wasn't on a 4%, 4% increase? 5% originally?
No, 7.
7, okay. So at the end of the day, we were gifted with another percent higher. So for me, I cannot agree to keep the millage rate the same because if you have, based on a $230,000 home, and your property values are up 8%, homestead's capped out at 3%, with the new school board tax increase, you're going to see an increase in your taxes. I'm wanting to find a way to give back to the residents because they believed in us as leaders. I want to partner with our cities, and I want to give back a gift that they've given to us. So I appreciate you giving me my time. Thank you.
Any further comments?
Yeah, I'd like to say a few words, if you don't mind. Or Franny, you want to?
No, go ahead.
I'm just going to read this so I make sure I got this right. For this year, the county is seeking to hold a millage rate steady for the next fiscal year, which, as you know, begins October 1st. I was surprised to learn through the budget workshops this year that the county's general fund, which most general government operations comes from property taxes, brings in approximately what we did in 2007 with 63,000 more residents. Another surprising fact was that the county is completing a five-year plan this year of no longer relying on reserves to stabilize the budget due to insufficient property tax revenues. One last surprising thing I learned last year, the county brought in $7 million less in property taxes than we did in 2007. But during that same period of time, increased funding for public safety by 25 million. I have to add one more surprising thing that I learned through the workshop this summer. Counties are responsible for the beaches, and the beaches south of the inlet, like in Fort Pierce, are eroding at record rates, and that's without the storms. The county will pay next year around $2.5 million to put sand on a small section of beach, beach just south of the inlet. Now, this beach is supposed to be a federal project due to the impacts from the federal inlet. However, the Army Corps of Engineers didn't receive enough funding, so we're on our own. And for the beaches further south, the numbers for renourishment over the coming decades is either mind-numbing or mind-blowing, depending on your frame of reference. I understand that paying taxes may be on a lot of people's priority list, but I can assure you that St. Lucie County is committed to being both efficient, efficient and effective with tax revenues it receives. As now the 20th largest county out of 67 counties in the state of Florida, and with a population of approximately 320,000, and the seventh-largest city in the state in Port St. Lucie, we continue to work to meet the rising demands of a growing and changing popu, population. I would love to see where we could make cuts, and if there's some recommendations, I would certainly like to listen to them and listen, because at the end of the day, we are responsible for the taxpayers. But I want to make sure that our services are the best out there. Thank you.
Further comment?
Madam Chair, Mr. Tipton, you and I had a conversation this morning, and I'm going to ask you to kind of jog my memory if I say it wrong, or you can either say it yourself. But our conversation this morning, we were discussing Port St. Lucie. And my hat's off to them to be able to give back millage decreases. But I think what's gotten lost in that conversation, as both of us remembered, was five years ago, they increased it over a mil.
That is correct.
If I'm, if I'm not mistaken. And they have since then been dropping it, what, quarter mil?
10th of a mil.
10th of a mil, you know, in small increments. And that's good. Five years ago, St. Lucie County did not increase their millage, correct?
Well, we've.
We've done one increase, right? And that was for law enforcement. No, it was for law enforcement, as far as the general fund goes. That's what I'm talking about. It was for the law enforcement to help for public safety. But short of that, mosquito control was one. But I think that was already, that was prior to five years ago, if I'm not mistaken. So am I correct in that one? That was the only, been the only millage increase? And how much was that one?
So, so St. Lucie County did have two millage increases over the last five years specifically related to public safety needs. And so over the course of that time, the aggregate millage rate has gone from approximately 8.3 mils to approximately 8.8 mils. So there were, there were a couple of incremental ones, much less than a full mil. The city of Port St. Lucie, five years ago, was at 5.6289 mils. In that year, they levied a 1 mil increase. And since then, they have, they have been decreasing each year to the point that right now, they're at 6.2740. So they are, they, they have gone down each year to get to that amount, but they're still higher than where they, where they were five years ago.
Okay. Now, again, I'm going to have you go back in memory. If you don't have these numbers, forgive me for putting you on the spot. But I'd like them at least for the next one. Is the city of Fort Pierce, I do believe they have increased their millage over the last five years?
Correct.
With no decreases.
So five years ago, they, they went from 6.5786 mils to 6.9 mils, and which is where they remain at this time.
Right. And the school board, over the last five years?
Um, I, I have some information, but they have different components, so I don't want to speak to that.
I know they do, but the ones that.
I don't want to speak to that in case I don't have all of the pieces right in my head.
Yeah, because one, they're set by state.
Right.
And the other ones are set within their, what they can do.
Correct.
But overall, if I'm not mistaken, there's not been a decrease.
I, I do show some. I do show one year that there is, but that may be because, they have had some state-manded decreases, so I'm not, I, I, I'm not 100% on that. I can have that information for the next one.
For our next hearing, if you can have that information, I'd like to see it printed out for everybody.
Okay.
If possible, with the two cities, the county and the school board. And I think that's going to be, paint a, a much clearer picture. And although I can tell you I have probably, Commissioner Townsend, not many times in my career up here have I voted for a tax increase.
I know. I agree.
And even on some of our ones in regards to public safety, I've held tight to that because I really felt like we could do it inside. Having said that, this year, to me, is that turning point for the county, having gone through the depression, recession, as Commissioner Zdowski always refers to. But also in trying to build our reserves back up, balance them back out again, much less build them back up, that this is the pivotal turning point this year. So as much as I would agree with you to start moving the millage down, we're not far off from everybody else, meaning our neighbors, our specific within-the-county neighbors. And I'm not seeing a tax increase. I'm seeing a property value increase this year. And I have to tell you, I personally, I'm glad we're having a property value, not as a county commissioner, but as a homeowner. I want to know my investment is finally worth more than it was back in the depression. And I don't even think we're even there yet to what the values were. Well, I know we're not. But that being said, knowing the importance, and we all just went through this, we were all out there at the EOC, we saw the fear in each other's faces when we were looking at Dorian coming. If we did not have the reserves where we need them to be as we did years ago, we would not have the lights on today, and not because F. P. L. didn't do their job. And that, to me, is a scary thought for the residents of our county, that we would not be able to provide when they needed it the most. During our budget discussions, we all wanted to look at, and we challenged the board staff with the next five-year plan as we're going through, and we start this right back up in January again, as we're starting back through that, to start giving us a five-year plan that will slowly start decreasing that millage, which I will remind you, we have not raised as much as some of our neighbors in the past. So I think we need to keep all of that in perspective as we move forward. And as much as I agree with you, Commissioner, you know, I would do anything to be in a position to drop that millage rate. But I can tell you, from experience of being, sitting here, this is not a year to drop it when we are so close to being balanced and so close to being able to finally move us in the right direction from a budgetary standpoint. We've done all the hard work. We've pushed the economic development. We've pushed the creation of jobs, and we've not given the county away in doing that. And that's something I think we can all take to the bank. There's a value to that because that value then goes to our residents. So I will be right at your side, Commissioner Townsend, next year pushing for that millage decrease. And trust me, you'll not be standing arm-in-arm on that one. But this is not the year that I could say that I could actually support it, knowing what we've gone through, knowing how close we are to the end of it, and knowing what's ahead of us, of the unknown and unpredictable possibilities that can happen.
Further comments? So we're at the end of a five-year plan. And I've got to say that when you did that, I wasn't here. But I appreciate the fact that you did. I've talked about strategic planning. We have started that work. I will tell you that I sat out at the EOC this weekend, and I saw what was going on as we were all there. And it was frightening. Now, we did not get the storm we anticipated, but we did not go unscathed. So we don't need a full-fledged hurricane to increase our expenses. The beach erosion is awful. And frankly, we already had problems there prior to the storm. So I think that that's important, you know? Dorian skipped us. We were lucky. I'm grateful for that. But again, he did not go through and leave us unscathed, and we're still not there for the end of hurricane season. I hope that there is nothing else, but we, none of us can be sure of that. And God forbid, if it happens, we will be there, and we will be working for our residents and our businesses to make sure that everybody is safe and up and running as quickly as it can happen. Our reserves, you know, I, I'm always concerned about that. That is where we get that money, when something happens. Every one of us, hopefully, has some kind of a savings account. And we all know how unexpected expenses come up, and we have to dip. And it's tough. It's tough. I think that this staff has worked hard. We have, we've all asked for a decrease, all of us. I am sure of that. But I also understand where we're at. Working on the next five-year plan, we still are down on employees from where we were, I'm sorry, Jennifer, 2007.
Yes.
We are still down in budgeting since then and income. So I am going to be supporting the stabilization of our budget at this point. So.
Madam Chair, are you looking for a motion?
Madam Chair, this would be, if you're, the board is ready, we'd be going to the next section of the agenda, which would be Agenda Item 4E, which would be, and for me to state, that we are now ready for the approval of the resolution adopting the fiscal year 2019-2020 tentative millage rates.
Now I would be looking for a motion.
Thank you. I move approval of a resolution adopting fiscal year 2018, 2019, 2020 tentative millage rates.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, can you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Townsend?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Zdowski?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Bartz?
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, this brings us now to Agenda Item 4F. Commissioners, we are now ready for the approval of the resolution adopting the fiscal year 2019-2020 tentative budget.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Townsend?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Zdowski?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Bartz?
Yes, ma'am.
So I think unless we have anything else, Mr. Tipton?
No, ma'am.
I think that we have come to a conclusion. The Board of County Commissioners will hold the final budget pub, excuse me, the final budget public hearing on Thursday, September 19th at 6:00 PM.
Madam Chair, before you ask for adjournment, can I just take just a moment to express my thanks to...
The Board of County Commissioners will hold the final budget pub, excuse me, the final budget public hearing on Thursday, September 19th at 6:00 PM.
Madam Chair, before you ask for adjournment, can I just take just a moment to express my thanks to the staff and to the citizens of this county who stood together arm-in-arm this week, and it was phenomenal, not only from neighbors helping neighbors, but the calm that was kept, although we always start grieving mad, going crazy, when is it coming? Kind of counting off the minutes. But also to our staff and our public safety, whether it was law enforcement and/or the fire district, they were all phenomenal. And we had the blessing of being able to see it firsthand, and unfortunately, the public can't just go in and out of the EOC during those timeframes. And you would be so very, very happy to know that your backs were being watched as a resident of this county, there wasn't a place that wasn't being looked at and looked under and looked on top of, and how do we do this, and how can we do it, and make sure no one's, there's no lives lost, and that the property damage was going to be minimal. So I just want to express to all of you, because we saw each other out there, but also to our staff and to the citizens of this county, great job, and you should be proud.
Madam Chair, if I could add to that? Yes?
Go ahead.
I just want to say this, it was my first year to be able to be experienced, sitting in the EOC, and from Howard Tipton to all you people out there that are staff sitting in, I was amazed. My wife liked to call it the, we should have named the hurricane molasses, because that's how long it took. But I was just amazed by the professionalism. My one son saw us on television and said, "Dad, how come you're not smiling?" Well, I'll tell you, my gut was turning, and I, I was nervous for, as a father, as a, as a son, for our citizens. But I asked Howard one afternoon, I was there, and I said, "Howard, what can I do? You know, what can I do to help?" And he said, you know, "How about going around, riding around your district and seeing if people need help?" And I can tell you, 90%, because I counted to 100, 90% of the houses either had shutters or boards up, and a couple of the houses were model homes, so I think they were impact windows, people heated the warning, they were just fantastic. And then when I, the creme de la creme was, I went to the special needs shelter, and I walked up to every cot, and I was walking around, and there was an older lady sitting there, probably my mom's age, around 94, and she had a caretaker with her who was probably not as in good a shape either, and they were sitting there, and I just walked up to them, and I asked them, is there, you know, I introduced myself, and I said, "Is there anything that I could possibly do?" And they were just overjoyed with the, with the support that they were getting, they had a triage center, their food was good, they had entertainment for the children. And this woman, you can't see it, but this woman handed me, it's, what it is, it's a, it's an angel with wings. And she said, "You're going to talk to a lot more people than I am, and I want to bless you." And I'll tell you what, it almost brought me to tears, but that's what this county is, and I'm so proud to be a, a part of this county. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any further?
So I'm going to take the opportunity to thank everybody that was there. You're right, Commissioner Mitchell, the professionalism was absolute. Everybody knew what they were doing, it ran very smoothly. And we talk about our local law enforcement and fire district and, and those people, but I have to tell you, the National Guard sat by our sides, the Coast Guard sat by our sides, FPNL sat by our sides, with I don't know how many trucks staged at the fairgrounds, with employees ready to go and service anybody that needed it. So I am great, we had FEMA there, and we had a lot of people. And it was wonderful to see how they meshed, and they all worked together. And I will tell you, there were some that probably were sleeping as they were standing, but they kept on going. So I want to thank Mr. Tipton for his leadership. I want to thank Ron Parish, you're back there?
Amen.
Thank you.
Good job, Ron.
But I want this to go out to all the staff who worked so hard, stayed in their lane, nobody seemed to have a problem, and we appreciate it. And we appreciate all of the people that were out there, the residents, who heated the warning, who buttoned up their houses, some of them left town, but everybody was involved, and everybody helped their neighbors. They made sure that every house was buttoned down and safe. So I can tell you that this hurricane was probably the most frightening, and I've been here for a while, so, but being with the people that we have, it made it much easier to bear. So once again, thank you all.
Madam Chair, just real quick, I, I concur with everything every one of you have said, but I also want to say thank you and recognize our businesses. We had a lot of small businesses and restaurants that were feeding everybody out there, and that's what this community does. We love one another. So I also want to recognize the small businesses and restaurants that provided food for everybody.
Great point.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, if I might just say, thank you for your support. It was certainly, I think, the best activation that we've had. I think we, Mr. Parish has been working on us to get in shape, and I, I think we're finally getting there. But it was a big team effort, and everybody was a part of it, from our city partners to the state agencies, to the federal agencies across the board, we were working well together. And so we just thank everybody for heeding the concerns and, and the advice that was given, but especially thank you for your support, for being out there and just supporting what we do. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment? Meeting adjourned.